I'll order the meeting of the zoning board of appeals, the village of Bartlett, counties of Cook, DuPage, and Kane. Please call the roll.
George Cozio.
Here.
Joe Bano.
Here.
Bob Picaro.
Here.
Guy Papa.
Here.
Michelle Suarez.
Here.
Charlie DeVoe.
Here.
Mike Weirden.
Here. You have before you the minutes from the September 3rd meeting. Chair will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by George, seconded by Bob. Please, any, please call the roll.
Joe Bano.
Uh, here.
Bob Picaro.
Yes.
Guy Papa.
Yes.
Michelle Suarez.
Yes.
Charlie DeVoe.
Yes.
George Cozio.
Yes.
Mike Weirden.
Yes. Okay, now, we didn't officially close the last...
Correct. Correct. You just need to reopen the public hearing. All the notifications, the affidavit from the petitioner, and the notice of publication, that all stands from the previous meetings.
Okay. So we'll reopen case number 20-09 Dartmouth Drive. Are the petitioners present?
No.
No. And we don't know why.
Um, if you want to continue it and see if they show up after we hear the next case.
Okay.
Do that, if you want to give them a few more minutes and let the next case proceed. Otherwise, you can discuss the case and vote.
All right, why don't we, I'll entertain a motion to continue this case.
So moved.
By Michelle.
Within today's meeting.
Just within this meeting. We can recall it then after the following, after the next case.
Okay.
Okay. Moved by Michelle, seconded by Charlie. Okay. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes.
Guy Papa.
Yes.
Michelle Suarez.
Yes.
Charlie DeVoe.
Yes.
George Cozio.
Yes.
Joe Bano.
Yes.
Mike Weirden.
Yes. Oh, they're here. Okay. Should we reopen?
It's up to you guys.
Yes, we'll reopen.
Go.
Case number 20-09 Dartmouth Drive. The petitioners have arrived.
No. There are three of them. My husband's right now off the side. He can let you come in.
Okay. Or...
Just continue it, do a, do a voice call, vote on it, so you can all say A, and then we can hear, we can continue to the Golfer's Lane.
Okay, so, all in favor of holding for a few minutes, let them get here?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. So we'll start with Golfer's.
Start with what?
We'll start with Golfer's Lane, the following case.
Okay. Golfer's Lane. Case number 20-12, are the petitioners here? Please come to the microphone. If you're going to speak, raise your right hand. Do you soundly affirm that the evidence you're about to give is only the whole truth?
Yes.
Okay, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Dan Palmer. I reside at 630 Golfer's Lane with my wife Lori.
Can I go ahead and present your case?
I've supplied the board already with a, with a letter, and rather than just read it here and repeat it, I've prepared some other comments since I've been thinking. I guess this is kind of all my fault. Lori and I have lived in Bartlett all our adult lives. This is our third home here. Our last home is where we lived longest and raised our children. Getting older and not needing the big home anymore, we moved to our current address four years ago. Bartlett on the Greens is one of the few single-family ranch subdivisions in Bartlett. The home is smaller, and it has an open space behind us that we've never had before. It's perfect for us. I knew about this particular subdivision because my mother was an original owner way back in 1988. Recently Lori asked me about building a three-season room when I, and when I hesitated, she reminded me that shortly before we moved here, I had said, "Let's do that at the next house." And so we are at the next house, and you can kind of see, it is my fault. I explained that there were several hoops that we had to jump through here. I knew that the HOA had a reputation for being difficult, but I also knew that others had built these rooms in their subdivision, so we pressed forward. After that, I consulted with the building department because I wanted to get an idea of what was involved. Bartlett codes are stiffer than many towns, and needed to figure out if it was feasible. They informed me that I would also need a variance, since that home, many homes on it, that border Villa Olivia in Bartlett have reduced backyards. Those backyards were reduced in part because of the open space behind it, but make no mistake, the lots were smaller because the builder could fit more homes in the PUD that way. I imagine the ZBA had to consider that alteration way back in the 80s. The golf course lots commanded lot premiums when first sold. Those premiums do not evaporate, they become part of the value of the property. We paid that price when we purchased the home. The sellers commanded a higher price based on the location. After that, I spoke with the community development staff and learned about the process necessary to gain approval. I specifically asked what types of projects and to what extent the ZBA generally responds favorably to. I know they can't speak for you, but I do know they can speak from experience. We planned this room accordingly. I've learned that my neighbor to the south is objected to our plans because she felt it would impair her view. I guess I look at it as I'm just trying to enjoy our property. Anytime you live in close proximity, there are going to be things that you don't necessarily like. Maybe I don't like that I can't park my car in the driveway because her tree hovers over and drops debris three of the four months of the year, three of the four seasons of the year. Maybe I don't like that I can't park my car across the street from her own home because my neighbor backed into my wife's car, and then she asked us not to park there. I guess it's too much to look behind you when you're backing up. But we didn't say anything because, you know, neighbors, these things happen. Now I'm told that my planned three-season room will create a hardship to their view. The room is less than 160 square feet, enough for a few chairs and a table. It would impact very little of their 180-degree view from their deck. And what do they think I'm looking at when I look to the south? Their deck, which seems allowable, extends into the setback nearly as far as mine does, and is three times the size. They added a roof structure at some point, and that would seem to me to trigger the same kind of ZBA review requirements that we are going through. Aside from that, it does impact our views. It just never dawned on me that something they have in their yard is any of my business. In general, views aren't protected. The structure could be built most anywhere else in town requiring only a building permit. In our subdivision alone, there are other structures that impact more than the 10-foot depth of my planned project. There are trees, bushes, privacy fences on decks, and all sorts of view obstructions that exist already on many properties in Bartlett on the Greens. The only reason it has come up is because of my rear yard variance request. The rear yard variance request is to extend five feet into the setback. If my understanding of a rear yard setback is correct, it means that they don't want me to get too close to anything built behind me. The structures behind me are over 500 feet away in the city of Belgium. The golf course will remain open space for the foreseeable future. Villa Olivia must remain a golf course through 2022 based on the agreement and covenant when the village first approved the subdivision. After that, it must remain open space into the 2040s. That requirement was added when the Park District purchased land and reannexed to the village after the Villa Olivia lawsuit. We are not asking for any side yard variance. My neighbor characterized the room as being within 10 feet of her home. There's more distance than that between our two homes as per village code, and then there's another 12 feet from the structure, structure to the corner of my home. All we're asking for is to build the smallest three-season room so we too can enjoy our home and enjoy our view. The size of this structure was deliberately kept small in the hope of gaining a favorable review from this board. In a balancing of interests, we believe that what we're seeking is not unreasonable. Lori sits out on our back porch religiously. This room would allow use in more inclement weather. We just want to enjoy our property, the same as any other homeowner in that subdivision does. I apologize for the long missive, but this is important to us.
Okay, so basically you're proposing the same footprint as the deck has right now?
Same footprint, no bigger. Obviously, I'd like to have a bigger room, but we can't have a bigger room here at all. Now, if I was on a different lot with no rear yard, I could build it 20 by 20.
Okay.
I are adding a deck north of the room addition, which is outlined in green on the plan survey.
And how does that compare to the one that exists right now? About the same size?
It's about the same size. It comes out just as far as the current deck. Decks are allowed to encroach up to 10 feet into the required rear yard, so the deck is not, does not require a variation.
Okay. Lori, did you have anything to say?
All right, I just wanted to add one additional document, and I'll pass copies to you when I'm done. But I asked a Realtor to give me an opinion as to the benefits or negatives of putting this on a home, and her words are, she thinks there are positive benefits to both the property and the neighbors if a three-season room is added. The existing deck is old and not aesthetically pleasing. Additional outdoor space to be used by the owner later in the fall and earlier in the spring would be a positive. Again, replacing a deck that's in excess of 20 years of age would be a positive, the property, and the renovation would be a high-quality, looking more house-like versus a metal porch structure, which is what a lot of the existing three-season rooms currently, currently look like. In closing, she said, "I do not see any negatives to the resale value for either the homeowner or the neighboring properties."
Okay. Any questions from anyone on the board?
Yeah, I'm slightly confused. The walk-by, the three-seasons room is, like, comes out at the, at the bottom on, on the ground level, and then the deck is being extended over it, is that...
The three-season room is on the second floor.
Okay, it is on the second floor.
Where the existing deck is.
Okay, okay. I'm clear now, thank you.
So it will be a peaked roof, just like that picture?
Correct. That's my best attempt at Photoshop.
The proposed addition, does it extend at all past the footprint of the existing deck, or is it exactly in line with the outer edge of the deck?
It's exactly the foot print of the deck.
I guess then I have a question for staff. Why are we looking at, why do we need a variation here?
Decks are, decks are allowed to encroach 10 feet into the required rear yard, so the required rear yard is 20 feet. A deck can encroach 10 feet into that. Once you put a roof over it, it is no longer considered a deck, it's considered a room addition, and that has to meet the rear yard setback.
Okay, thank you for the explanation. That makes sense.
No, we are not going to build it any bigger than the deck that exists already. We just want a place where she and I can sit and maybe into late October, November.
Okay. Anyone else before we open it up to the public?
It was hard to, I couldn't get on other properties because I would have to have knocked on the doors and asked for permission. But from what I could see, it appears that there's a large number of decks, three-season rooms, three-season room over a, an open area, over a closed area, I mean, there's a wide variety of things. What you're proposing is the three-season room over the deck, I'm sorry, over the, the ground level, so the ground level is enclosed also, or is it not? It is or not?
No, the ground level will not be enclosed.
Okay.
It's, uh, we, we like it up there because we bought a ranch house where eventually, I imagine, it's not going to be as easy to go, get up and down the stairs to the basement.
So you have a walkout then?
We do.
Today, and, and in the future, if it goes, and the deck, the proposed deck is no, no larger in its extension into the property than the current deck slash future addition, it's just added to the side?
I, I'm struggling, my hearing's not good in the first place, and these masks, I'm, I'm struggling.
Yes, what we're proposing will not go any further into the rear yard, nor any wider than the existing deck. And then we have a walkout basement that has a pretty old concrete builder, and we'll, and we'll be replacing that with nice concrete down there.
It's actually little, like, foot and a half by foot and a half slabs with rotting timber in between them, and uneven, dirty, cracked. We're, we're looking to make that actually a usable patio, and by moving the staircase from emptying out on the side of my house where it's wet all the time to under the deck, it actually becomes usable. You can walk down to the lower level there without going through the house.
Okay.
But the proposed deck isn't coming out any further, it's just down the side of the house, but out to the same place it, it is now.
The room will be the same footprint of the existing deck, we will add a, an additional deck to the north, and...
It won't be any, it won't go any further out?
No.
Can staff make any comments about other properties, the, the number of, variety of constructions? I mean, I, like I said, I see decks, I see three-season rooms.
Correct.
There's a wide variety of things happening, or already happened.
So, a lot of the homes were built right up to the 20-foot setback, so a lot of them do have decks that are at-grade, 18 inches or below, are allowed to extend up to your property line, but not within the easement. So a lot of those do go up to the 10-foot, go additional 10 feet, so there's a 10-foot rear, rear yard on those. There have been two variations granted by the zoning board and the village board. One is on Golfer's Lane, the other one was on Rose Lane in 1999. One of the variations was for six feet, the other one was a 13-foot encroachment that was permitted. There have been two variations approved previously in this neighborhood, but for the most part, what you see out there, the patios are allowed to encroach, the at-grade decks are allowed to encroach, and don't have to meet that 20-foot setback that they have to for theirs being on the second story.
Good.
And I think Dan alluded it, to it in his comments, there are a lot of decks out there that have put up privacy fencing on either end of their decks, so then you can't see your neighbor's property, so that's another thing that, there's a lot of that in the But if you have any questions, we provided you with a lot of pictures, pictures of other structures in the neighborhood, pictures of our property, pictures of the house to the south. So if you have any questions, let us know.
We should mark this Exhibit D and the letter Exhibit E. Forgot to mention it. Okay, anything else?
Thank you.
Well, I know, when I was out there and took a look, I noticed how you keep the house quite open, where, with the shades up and everything, and typically in a three-season room, there's a lot of window space, so I would think that you could see through that also. Right?
Yeah, our intention is to cap it, all windows, all windows, you know, well, we don't want to, uh, start...
Actually, the idea is to just, you know, probably even leave the windows open, not even close them at night, until part of the year comes that you have to, or, or it's raining.
Mm-hmm. Okay, anything else before we open it up to the public? Okay, at this point, I shall open it up to the public. If you have something to say, there are forms in the back to fill out, then we don't have to swear you in. Fill those out and give them, or are they, Kim has them? Okay, oh, you already have some. Okay.
I live at 626 Golfer's Lane, right next door to Lori and Dan, and I'm here to oppose this variance because its purpose is to allow for a room addition to be constructed on the upper level of a small, open deck facing Villa Olivia Golf Course. As, as far as I've always known, since I moved in, there's not supposed to be additions of any kind, room additions, on the golf course. The golf course homes were marketed as open green space with unobstructed views of the golf course. It was to remain this way for 35 years, making it a great place to spend your retirement years. Buyers paid a large premium for the golf course site. Yards are smaller than is typical in Bartlett. Because of the open green space and views afforded by the golf course, it was reasoned that we didn't need bigger yards. We cannot build playsets, swings, storage sheds, or anything that cannot be put away at day's end. I'm sure this would not work with a room addition. The north and south sides of this addition will have walls, a door, windows, stairs, and a rooftop. My view to the north will be totally blocked and partially my view to the west. This will look like a house, on a, a small house on top of a deck. There is only 10 feet separating our two homes. This will definitely block my view and compromise my open space. I believe it will be an eyesore that will adversely affect my property value. It certainly will have a negative impact on the quality of life I have enjoyed using my deck for the past 30-plus years. When I walk out onto the deck, I see open green space of the golf course, a clear view on both sides with neighboring decks almost in an unobstructed line. It's important to me not to have the open view to the north blocked. Most of my activities is carried on, on the north side, as are the patio doors leading for my dining room and for my kitchen. And it's frustrating to me, having lived there for over 30 years, for someone to move next door for only about two years and then try to change everything, or make significant changes that directly affect me, and eventually, I believe, the whole community. So I ask you not to approve this variance.
Thank you.
I am Mike Stapleton, I'm Vicee's son-in-law, and I'm here to summarize the packet pages 39 and 40, that it gives reasons for recommendation.
Please state your address for the round. Thank you.
I live at 992 Mcfee Drive, Lake in the Hills, Illinois.
Could you speak up a little, please?
Sure. If you look on page 39 and 40 of, of the packet for today's meeting, I'm summarizing that it gives reasons for recommendation for this approval, and the recommendation, approval is that there is no detrimental impact. With what my mother-in-law just said, the view from the deck will be greatly hampered by, especially the south, the south elevation, that's what we would be seeing from her deck if they build it. You got a gable roof and a wall right behind those stairs, and from the deck, I passed out pictures of our view right now, and it would be blocked totally from our view to the north. As the matriarch of the family, we have a lot of gatherings there, and barbecues, and family events, and this has caused great distress for her in the past two months with her health, seeing that she's going to have that view blocked if, if the variance is And I want, I know the board has their rules, but if this is granted, it's, to me, a slippery slope. It's granted for one, it'll be granted for another, and another. It's a great expense, a loss of property value. You know, back in 1987 or 88, when she bought the property, she paid $12,000 extra just to have that view. That's priceless, and nowadays, nowadays, as the money is greatly inflated, we want to ask the board for flexibility with this, and with the fixed code requirement that's already in place, we don't want the variance granted because of the various reasons we already stated. Not too long ago, the golf course was wanting to be sold, and the Carrados wanted to build townhouses there, and that was in 19, or, let's see. I don't have the exact date, but, and sometime, sometime ago, so, there was a big discussion about that then, and the property was retained as a golf course after that, that requested for a variance. So this is really a distressful time for my mother-in-law with heart condition, and she's been sick to her stomach for the last month. We, we don't want to see that happen because she's getting up in years, and this is really going to be a hardship for her, so we ask that you don't grant the variance.
I have, I have a question, you're talking about the view to the north. Now, I went out there and viewed the property, and from their deck, I didn't, I mean, you're not going to be obstructed from the golf course directly behind you, but it's not like a real scenic view at the property to their north that would be blocked.
Well, I submitted an email with those photos that you have enlarged there.
Mm-hmm.
With the drawings that were presented here.
We have a few emails that we received, and there was an 11 by 17 that has several of the photographs that he included in that.
Okay.
Could you explain each of these photos?
Yes. If you can tell me, which one do you have?
Well, I guess it's from your deck, view looking from patio door, there's a grill in the forefront, and it's looking...
It's looking north and west, right in the corner of the deck.
Okay. So you, from that picture, you can't see at all the deck next door, it looks like?
As you move over across the page, you'll see another view looking north.
Right.
You see the deck.
And what's that white?
It's like a screen or something.
That's a, that's a netting on the next house to the north that people put up to prevent golf balls from whacking them, because the tee box for that hole is off to the left... balls from whacking them, because the tee box for that hole is off to the left. I was there today, and it's actually kind of, if you're slicing the ball and you're right-handed, it's not a good thing, because those homes are right there. But that's what that netting is, is to prevent golf balls from hitting people on that deck.
Okay, is that at 630?
No, that's the next one. On the north side, on the north side of 630.
That is on...
634, probably.
That's on 634. That netting's on the property that's at 634.
That's the one to which she's making reference.
Okay, so the deck railing that is seen in this photograph is at 630?
Yes.
Is that right?
That's correct.
Bob, I'll point it out to you.
With that picture, though, the obstruction would be of the netting. This structure that you're going to build, you wouldn't see the netting anymore, is that right?
That's what I was likely, yes.
This is...
What we would see is a structure, a room addition.
Okay. So this is the petitioner's deck? That's the one that has the netting?
There's trees.
Can't really see, you can see part of the deck here.
Anyway, to the north.
So it would block that view.
The trees aren't always obstructing it because the leaves are gone.
But they're there.
They are there.
So I'm not totally convinced that that view is going to be obstructed.
You walk onto the deck, and you'll see a wall.
Right.
You'll see a wall, this new room addition, period.
I was there.
You'll see a gabled roof and a wall on the south elevation with the stairs coming down.
All right. Thank you.
You guys...
I understand.
You understand us?
Thank you.
I was up there.
Okay, just making sure.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No, thank you. Do we have another?
When I look at the aerial view that's looking down on 630, as was just stated, to the left of the deck and house proper, there is a tree. And since that's not being removed and part of the new construction, the tree stays. It has a certain degree of blockage. And this is to staff, are there not a number of structures like this surrounding this water area, the open area?
There are, but like on this side of Villa Olivia, there is one that received a variation. Everything else met the setback. That's a covered enclosed room addition. There is only one that received a variation on this side of the golf course. There is one on Rose Lane that had to receive a variation. Everything else has met the setback.
And by meeting the setbacks?
It means it's 20 feet away from the property.
They just go right to building. They go to building and planning for approval.
Correct.
Sue Pruden?
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
My name is Sue Pruden. I live at 140 West Wood Street in Palatine. I am Vacy Pruden's daughter. This has been my family's home for over 30 years, with three generations having lived there. Lori and Dan, you moved in about four years ago. When my parents built their house, as you heard earlier, they had to pay a high premium to live on the golf course so they could enjoy the expansive green open views. Lori and Dan, are you willing to reimburse my mother the $12,000 premium with 30 years of compounded interest for decreasing the value of her property due to your room addition? I served, it's my understanding that the homeowners Association have approved this, so that's why we're here for the next step. I served on my Board of Homeowners Association for two years. We kept matters confidential unless it had a direct impact on homeowners. We notified and involved the homeowner in discussions well before any decision was made. That was not the cause with the Bartlett Homeowners Association. My mother was never informed of their meetings regarding the Palmer's room addition. The board, the Homeowners Association decision to approve the room addition was unethical and an abuse of power, in my opinion. Lori and Dan, I do not understand why you would build something so large on the top of your deck, knowing that it will have a negative impact on my mom's quality of life after 30 years. I pray that God blesses you both with some satisfaction in the part of your soul that has a big void, something that's driving you to make this kind of decision. And I'm asking the zoning board if you would not approve the variance. Thank you for your time.
Or, any questions?
I mean, we have nothing to do with the Homeowners Association.
Right.
And I don't know, so apparently they got some type of approval, but that, we don't enforce the bylaws of the Homeowners Association, but we try to encourage the homeowner to go by them. So if they got some type of approval, that really wouldn't have a big impact on this.
Right.
Okay, is there somebody else?
Has the Homeowners Association made any statement as to their ruling, their opinion on this property?
There was a member of the Homeowners Association who came in, said that the board had voted for approval, but she was contemplating whether that was the right way to vote. She felt she didn't have enough information, but they had already made their decision. Again, that has no bearing on this variation request. We just, we request that the homeowner tries to get HOA approval, but it's not required to get a building permit from us. They're two completely separate processes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mike Seawick?
Good afternoon, everyone, or evening. I'm Mark Seawick. I live at 569 Rose Lane. I'm in the HOA, the subdivision that we're talking about. I was a previous board president up until this past year and treasurer before that, and I've been there for five years at 569 Rose Lane. So there's a lot of questions about the board and what they can approve and what they can't approve. I was part of the rewriting of the bylaws and everything, so they do have the right to go ahead and make approval on this without, based on the bylaws and everything, so, but I'm not here to justify what the board did. I wasn't sitting on the board at the time and everything. Over at 569 Rose Lane, which we've talked a lot, we're on the fifth hole and the second hole, a lot of the decks there all have the screen wall, the privacy wall, so we don't look 180, so we don't look on top of everybody's deck and everything. Our view is definitely out towards the golf course. That's what we, that's how I bought the house, was to look out towards the golf course, not to look at my neighbor's deck and not to look at my other neighbor's deck. Also, with their house, I went over there today too, like everybody else did, their backyard setback is the same, but they have a, their house where the deck is sets back about six feet. So when they look, walk out their house and look to the north, they're looking at the side of the Palmer's house. They have to go out to the edge of the deck to look to the north, and then they have a big maple tree there, like everybody has said, that we've all seen that maple tree there. So I think we live there, we love the golf course, and that's the part of it, is to look at the golf course, not really to look at our neighbor's decks one way or another. While I was on the board, I didn't have any, anybody come, no, actually, we did. We had one, but it wasn't on the golf course, where they came for a three-season room, and we did approve it at the time, but it wasn't on the golf course, so we never had this issue, and it didn't have any of the side yard setbacks. I don't think had any issues on that one. So, but, so that's my opinion. I mean, I don't think it's not knocking down our value of our homes whatsoever. I think we're all better for it, and I don't have an issue with it. I'm also an architect as a profession, so anything that improves and looks good, and I think what they did, and I didn't draw this up, I think it looks excellent, and it's a nice addition and a nice three-season sunroom, which I've done plenty of them in my time, too, so.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone have any questions of him? Okay, next.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Conrady. I live at 683 Rose Lane. I'm also back up to the golf course. I brought some pictures with me that I can show you. These pictures depict is all of the different six-foot-high fences, privacy fences, that are on just about every deck that is in my, on Rose Lane. It also depicts, on page two, is my neighbor right to the east at every right and decided to put privacy trees and bushes, one to the side of their property, and then decided to plant trees right across their border. I have no view of the golf course to the left of my house, and I'm fine with that. These people are great people. They decided to do what they wanted to do. It's their property. I'll add one thing, too, is the view, there is no view ordinance in our bylaws, zero. There's no automatic right to preserve status quo with respect to light, air, view, and privacy, with only one exception. That exception is if someone builds, deliberately builds, maliciously blocks another view with a structure that has no reasonable use to the owner. This is not the case. The other thing I want you to know is I lived across the street from Dan and Lori Palmer for 25 years on Shawnee Circle. I'm now a part of this neighborhood, and what they're doing, and what they've always done, is first-class. And as an owner of a property, they should have the right to do what they want on their property. It doesn't make sense that their neighbor is objecting to a partial blockage. Like I said, to the left of me, I have no view of the golf course. And in the lower picture is a picture of what I would have if they didn't put all these trees in, which is beautiful, but it's their right to have their privacy, and it's their right to build this addition. There's also the picture of the one addition or three-season room that was in question. There's a picture of that also. That obviously blocks their neighbor's view as well, but there's never a complaint. So, any questions?
No, thank you.
A comment. I live in a community where there were premium lots. The focal point of my lot is not so much to the side, left and right, but to the back. And as you look out further to, in the back of the yard, that's where the vision changes to left and right, so you get a panoramic view. The side views, you just don't see them all the time. When you're looking out on the properties, that's when you see the quote-unquote "open view." I think these homes on the golf course seek to take advantage of that open view onto the golf course. And as this gentleman said, that over time, people plant trees, bushes, change the view that's on their property that other people see. So it's within reason that they made those changes. I think it's in reason that the homeowners here are asking for a reasonable change to the rules.
Okay, anybody else?
I live at 618 Golfer's Lane. I'm two or three doors south of the property. So I came tonight really wanting to hear both sides to this, because I'm far enough away, it doesn't affect me. But in really seeing the aerial view there, I don't see the problem, because it's not going to go any further out, and when you look at the aerial view, to the north, there's really nothing there. You're looking out straight ahead at the golf course is our view. So if it was my neighbor, I honestly wouldn't have a problem with it. And I know that on that model, the only way to get to see the golf course is the back windows, because the side windows of the house, whether a new addition is there or not, it's the side of your house. My old neighbor used to come and use our grill, because he'd see us using it. I mean, it's right there. So you're only on the side of the house, you're really not seeing any view from the other side windows. So that's my opinion. I'm two doors down, and I would not have a problem if it was the one next door to me. That's all I can say.
Okay, thank you.
So hard to see me smiling underneath that thing. My name's Dawn Deluge. I live at 565 Rose Lane, which actually puts me next door to Mark Seawick. I am on the current board. I'm the treasurer at the HOA, and I was previously the vice president. I'm not here in an official capacity. I'm here as a homeowner. I do agree with several of the statements that were made by the previous commenters, one of them being that many of the homes have three-season rooms and on each of the streets of the neighborhood. It's not just one, the two middle streets back up to each other, so dogleg and part of Golfer's backs up to each other. So they have, they do not have the premium lots, obviously, but they do have three-season rooms. However, on the outsides, both Rose Lane and Golfer's, those are the lots that have views to the golf courses. While we've only been there six years, we probably also paid a premium to have that golf view, because it was still a part of the home when we purchased it. Our deck has a privacy screen. We built it within the last six years. We have gotten approval by the Village of Bartlett. I cannot see marked "house to my north," and I cannot see the house to my south, to which I'm very grateful, by the way. Won't go into it, but I'm just saying. Okay? So those block much more than a three-season room with windows. In addition to that, it still doesn't block my view of the trees in Mark's yard, or the tree in my yard, or the stuff out, just not exactly to the sides, which allows us the privacy. Okay? But our view to the golf course remains as beautiful as the day we moved in. I see that in neighborhoods, over the kind of period that Vacy's talking about, people make improvements. I think that's normal. I think the way we live today is different than the way they promoted it in 1988. I think if you look on the inside of those houses, many of them have taken down walls and gone to the open concept view, you know? Many of them have finished basements or put other amenities into their homes. I see this as an improvement of the homeowners, of the home value, and therefore, and an improvement to the neighborhood as a whole. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions of her? Okay, anyone else?
Good evening, everybody. This gave me a chance to not work for the evening, so. I reside on 635... I reside on 635 Golfer's Lane. I own my property with my wife Paola. We basically across the street from the Palmers, the opposite street. Our view of the golf course is limited, because we don't, we didn't pay premium. We see a little bit. All, all we see is golf, golf balls. Right to the south of me, you could see that house to our south. That's a, that's an additional room. I've seen them all over. I ride my bike all the time with my kids, and I see them here and there, but that's for sure, kind of an addition. It's elevated with concrete. Never bothered me or anybody else. I think that, I recognize that I'm probably one of the youngest generations that live in the neighborhood, and some of the things that I like about the proposal is the fact that it is an improvement to whoever is going to live there next, and the ability to enjoy the property as it is. It is their property. I wish I could build a sunroom myself, too, but, but anyway, it doesn't obstruct me in any way. But I do see that my neighbor to the south enjoys her sunroom every, whenever I see her. And I think that that's pretty much the purpose that they, they're building the sunfor, the sunroom for, the four-season room for, so. That's it.
Okay, any questions from him?
No.
Okay, any others? Is there anybody else that has a comment to make? Any comments from the board?
Yeah, Christie, could you zoom in on that?
What, on the petition?
On 630 and the house to the south. So it looks to me, Mr. Stapleton, that your deck is what, maybe two feet, foot and a half?
It's set back at least three feet from the neighbor's deck.
I mean, looking at the, the picture of your deck, very nice deck. Okay, it's back a little bit more, but if you were to look to your property from, from Palmer's property, they're looking, they would be looking at, at your deck in a, in a similar manner as what you're saying going that way.
It's a deck, though. It's not a room addition.
Well, it's got a roof.
It's just a California lattice roof to keep the golf balls from coming into the, on the deck from the 17th tee.
The roof is, it's lattice, so the building department does not consider that to be an enclosed structure, so it does not have to meet the same setback that a room addition does. However, that, the pergola, and that was done without a permit, and so the homeowner has been contacted to submit a building permit after the fact for the roof and for that pergola.
Seems pretty strange that, that structure's been there 30 years, and now that there's something happening with the next-door neighbors.
It came to our attention, because I went out to the site to take pictures as part of my due diligence for writing the staff report. And if we see something at that point that looks like it may be a non-conforming structure, or done without a permit, then we notify the building department, and they go through their records.
This was built in 1988, and now it's being recognized. It seems pretty fishy, actually.
It was the fir-
Where are you personally? You live in the building, right?
Yes, my mother-in-law lives there.
You don't live near that property, okay.
Correct.
And if that, yeah, 88, but when was that deck and lattice work built? I mean, that could have been done-
It was built with the house.
It's in great shape.
It's a very beautiful deck.
There was a permit issued for the deck. There was not a permit issued for the pergola.
We understand the builder did all that, and not privy to all the particular pieces of the deck. We just figured it was a, it was a deck. It was all built at the same time.
Not according to the building permit submittal.
Okay, well, I have not seen that.
That deck is in very good shape and looks beautiful. I, I don't see what the problem is to the people to the north, because it's, it's not a big, beautiful deck like what your mother-in-law has. And I'm, I don't see what the problem is with the view. It's, you're, you're looking at the golf course. That's not being obstructed. If they had some big, beautiful landmark, or some spectacular thing on display, that would be another thing. But their deck is just kind of a common, ordinary thing. I'm not sure that the view of that deck is a valid concern. It's-
Your deck isn't one, what's in question here. It's, what's in question is putting a structure on, on top of that deck.
Yeah, but she's talking about a blocking the one over at 634.
Well, I don't really care what happens on 634. I'm at 626.
Right, and that's what she, and that's what was her argument before, that it blocks her view of the, the other people's deck, if, if this gets granted. And I don't, I don't see that it's, if, if it does block it, that she's not losing that much of a thing, that it's not like some spectacular view. It's, it's nothing compared to her deck. She has a beautiful deck that is well-kept. Many people don't keep their decks up, and they deteriorate after a period of time.
Right, she spends a lot of time and money on that deck, so, to keep it up. And it's, it is beautiful, and it's protective for us when we're on the deck, and there's golfers on 17th tee. And as you see, one of those pictures showed that a golfer's net on the home north of the Palmers is there for a very good reason. But take away that view from our, my mother-in-law's deck across the Palmer's property, and seeing that net doesn't, it's not a big deal seeing a net, because it's protective, so. But putting a structure in, in between the two, it's totally blocking the view to the north, and it's-
But that's what I'm saying. What is so spectacular about that view to the north?
It's open space, that's why.
Okay.
Very open.
Well, you look at a line of trees. Really, if you look at a higher elevation, you've got houses, and it's really just a line of trees that are blocking anything. The view is out to the course. It's all, if you look straight down-
The houses are so close together now, and just by adding another wall to block this view, it, it just adds to the, the width of the house and the blockage that will just be more. And the whole idea is to have open space and a view, premium price paid for that view, and we recommend you don't grant the variance.
Yeah, what, what I'm struggling with is we're looking at, I mean, a couple degrees. I think one of the gentlemen noted, I mean, the golf course is to the rear. Instead of 180 degrees, and obviously on both ends, you're looking at other people's decks. So, a couple, a couple degrees, you won't be able to see the trees that are two houses down, three houses down. The golf course itself, both to the north and to the south, and certainly directly across, is not going to be compromised at all.
I don't, I don't agree with that. The view to the north is definitely going to be ham, impaired by another wall at the same level as the deck at 626. While we sit there and look outside and look down the way, we'll be seeing another wall.
Yeah, when you look directly, directly north.
Exactly.
I, I don't, I-
And there's a little curvature of the street, too, so there's a difference.
It does, it does have a curve there slightly, but yeah, it's, the whole idea, the, the deck that they have now is fine. You know, you see, you know, they have barbecues and whatever on that deck, and that's not an obstruction. But once you put in a gable roof and a structure in that same footprint, plus the stairs go into the setback area closer to the golf course, I mean, it's, it's very intrusive.
My belief would be that, I don't believe it's intrusive, just based on the, all the testimony that we have from people in the area, other homeowners that live in that area. And in addition, we have affidavit by Mary McFarland from RE/MAX, saying that you don't see any, and her expert opinion is a broker, they don't see any adverse effects to this, only positive effects. I, I don't see it being an obstruction.
Anyone else?
I just, I have, you know, I have friends, family that live on different golf courses, not this one. And I think when you're talking about paying a premium price, you're paying the premium price for the view of the course, not a premium for the neighbors that have either an open yard, or a nice yard, or some hints down the way. You're paying for that view of the course, and that's what's, you're guaranteed that that course will stay a golf course, and that property will stay, you know, without construction on it, not being bought and sold for, you know, some apartment complex or something. And I, I think it's a, in my opinion, a little bit of a stretch to think that the views, you know, your neighbors' yards are part of your views that you were charged a premium for.
It's the whole panoramic view from the deck. That's, that's-
Well, when I walked out there, your, her deck is not, is intruding on the panoramic view of 630. So I think your panoramic view argument is not valid. You know, it's, there's a-
I said the deck, the deck on 626 is-
Deck on 626 obstructs the panoramic view of the deck on 630. So your argument that looking out to the north on, from 626, at 630, the structure would interfere with your view, I don't believe is valid. I mean, you have a great view and a great deck of the golf course, and that's what it is. The Palmers, I believe, are entitled to improve their deck.
Anyone else?
Their deck, we're not asking to prove their deck, we're asking-
Improve.
That's an improvement.
Improve.
If they're going to build something on it, that's an improvement.
Well-
Sorry.
And they're three feet further away from the deck at 626, so the idea of their deck being obstructed, you know, I don't see that.
Obviously, we have different points of view.
And I, I don't, I fail to see the glamour of 634, why that's so crucial to seeing that. I mean, it's not, you have plenty of open space behind you to try to see what's going on on their deck, or, it just, it doesn't seem valid to me either. Anyone else?
When I visited the property, the, the deck on the 630 property does show its age. It needs something to be done with it to make it safer, better, more attractive, et cetera. I think that the proposal to put in the deck and the three-season room is very reasonable, and adds to the value of their home, and adds to their interest and willingness to stay in Bartlett. I don't see the view being blocked, personally. There's a slight blockage to the side, but that's up close. And as you take in the panoramic view, an inverted V, if you will, the tip of the V being on the property, when you scan out, that's your view. It's the view of the pond, the golf course, from side to side, not the immediate property to your right and left. These homes also have an issue or a concern in that they're close together, so you don't have the luxury of many feet of space between the homes. That would change the view. But these are what they are, and I think the request is reasonable for the property they have and what they want to do.
Anyone else?
Something else to ask.
Okay.
There was talk about the stairway coming down on a south elevation, coming back towards 626, and then landing, and then going back out into the setback area. I question the idea that, that tree would even be able to stay there. Has that been considered at all by the Palmers? They're keeping that tree or not?
Tree can not help anywhere.
Okay. It looked like, just a quick view, that stairwell would be into the tree.
Stairs are actually curving around the three-season room. The tree is significantly further from that, and should not be impacted by the construction.
Okay.
The existing stairs, you can see, come out towards the property to the south. The stairs are actually going to wrap around the room addition, so it won't have any impact on the tree.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, you know my thoughts, and we set our peace, and let's see what, where we go from here.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else? Any further discussions or motions from the board?
I would make a motion to pass along a positive recommendation to the village board to approve item number 20-12, 630 Golfer's Lane.
We have a motion on the floor. At this point, I shall close the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm in a little disadvantage here, because I can't hear a lot, a lot of what's being said. But what I'm objecting to is the open space. It's the feeling of open space. That's what you have there. You have trees all, all up and down on either side, vegetation, whatever, growing from neighbors. It's just ambience. It's a feeling. And the, like I said, between our two homes, it's very small. And when you go, when I look out my dining, my kitchen, I look at a wall. When I look out the dining room, I look at a wall. Now, when I walk out on the deck, I'm going to look at another wall, and that's going to make a difference. Yeah, I do have, I mean, the rest of the golf course, but I don't stand out there with binoculars, looking around. It's just the ambience. And when you have a small house blocking something, and it isn't ground level, it's up high. So that's what I think is bad, is the bad part, and it's what disturbs me. I think it will appear to be so closed in between our houses. That's why I think it will affect my property value, because you're, you're going to be there, and you're going to see all this. Well, everything is so squeezed in there. And you see this little house up there, and it's going to be even worse. It's open space that's going to be compromised.
There will be a lot of windows in there, though, which you-
Pardon?
There will be a lot of windows in the three-season room. You should still be able to see through, over toward the neighbors on the north.
Can't see over the top.
No, not, but you should see through the glass. I, I saw the way they keep the house with a lot of windows open. You should be able to see through the three-season room once it's built, because there'll be windows on three sides. I don't see that it would be a blocked, a real blocked view. I don't see that it would be a blocked, a real blocked view.
I don't think I quite got all that. I, I'm just trying to express what I feel is wrong with it. If it were a lower level, it wouldn't be so bad, but up high, it, it just takes away from everything, from the whole feeling of the open space. I mean, once it's up, I mean, I can look at it now and I can see that. It's going to make a difference. Thank you.
We have a motion. Did we have a second?
I have a question.
Okay.
In regards to the stairs, the new stairs, do they stick out further than the current deck towards the rear?
They do decks and steps. Steps are allowed to encroach into a setback. They don't have to follow the setback regulations. It's an access-
Okay.
-issue.
Thank you for the clarification. Okay. Once again, then, we'll close the public hearing portion.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved by George, was it? And seconded by Bob. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Guy Papa?
Yes.
Michelle Suarez?
Yes.
Charlie DeVoe?
Yes.
George Cozio?
Yes.
Joe Vano?
No.
Bob Picaro?
Yes.
Mike Weirden?
Yes. Okay, we shall pass on a positive recommendation to the board. Stay in touch with Christie to find out when it goes to the village board. You have a chance then also to express your view. Because they, they could go along with us or overrule. Okay, the item, that was the first item on the agenda.
Can I ask for a break?
Yes.
For a few minutes, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
We shall open it up again at 8:19.
I'll be back.
Okay. And... Case number, hold on here. What's, do you have the case? This is not, here we go. Case number 20-09, Dartmouth Drive. How do we reopen this, Christie?
You just reopened the public, you state that it was continued from September 3rd, and you're reopening the public hearing?
Okay, the case number 20-09, that was continued from September 3rd, we are now reopening. Are the petitioners here? Okay. Step forward to the mic and tell us what you have to say.
Hello, everyone. First of all, I want to apologize for the, for being late. And second of all, I want to thank you, all of you who came and saw the place, where it's at, because it's much different from pictures than what it is in reality when you were there on the spot. So I really want to appreciate, I really want to thank you for that. This is a, a big thing for me. So, starting first, I want to talk about the booklet that we passed around. Everybody got one, I, I believe. Yes, everybody has one.
Exhibit D.
D. I was just gonna ask you if it was D. Okay. Exhibit D. Okay? Thank you for making us packets, too.
So, those numbers means which way the pictures were made? And from what directions? So you can see the line of the actual fence, where it's gonna lie. There's, if you look at the, if you look at the, oh, I don't have mine. Let me, uh-
Could he borrow yours, Christie? Well-
Oh, yeah, my bad.
To reference?
Are you getting my ears? Thank you. Yeah, of course. All right. So when we- First of all, I want to start with a, a little bit of a misunderstanding of a fence, well, the border line of our property, which is a little bit different than, than we previously assumed. It's not a big deal. We still used the sidewalk, even though part of the sidewalk is, is on our property. So you can see that. How about we go through this booklet first?
Okay.
And we will understand that more clearly. If we go to page number one, I mean, no, number two, which is picture number one, you can see a string going through the driveway, going all the way through to the end of my property. There's a, there is a cross that represents a border of the property. And it's-
Cross on page two, on the picture two?
No, no, I'm sorry, picture one.
Okay.
Picture one.
Oh, I see the cross there, too. Okay.
So that, and, and when you, and that picture one was taken, if you go to the first page, you can see the number, number one, picture taken from this location, facing east, west, I'm sorry, facing west.
Can I just interrupt for a minute? I think this might simplify things. The original Plata survey showed the sidewalk in the right-of-way. At some point in time, the sidewalk was reconstructed. When it was reconstructed, it encroaches in part of his property. So it doesn't stay in the right-of-way where it should be, so it varies. So sometimes it encroaches, sometimes it doesn't. So the property, the sidewalk is partly on his property towards the-
Which we didn't know before, right?
What?
Which we did not know.
We did not know that before. He has a Plata survey that's dated, I, I don't remember what the date of it was, but it was several years after the survey we were originally using, and it does clearly show that the sidewalk is within his property.
Okay.
When you, to, 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 to see that very clearly, you can go to page number, well, picture number two, and picture number three.
You see that little cross on the sidewalk?
Yes. That's where the, that cross represents, of course, the, the border.
Okay.
The numbers are on the top left corner, in, in red. I don't know why it's in red. I wasn't doing it, but maybe, hard to see for someone?
Yes.
So picture number two shows it from, from the opposite side, from the picture number one. And then picture number three shows where, where the sidewalk actually-
So it kind of meanders and straddles the line back and forth.
It does. As it gets closer to the bike path, it moves back into the right-of-way. So with that portion, it's not on his property at all, but as you get closer to Dartmouth Drive, it does encroach.
And you can, you can see that on picture number, number 11, how it, how it becomes even with the sidewalk. There's a, there's a, I don't know if you're gonna be able to see it very well, but it's on the bike path. It's a rusted, old metal pool that was, that is still there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, yes. That's exactly what. And there's, you can also see it on number 12. Towards the school that is behind. And then, if we go to the, to number 13, well, do you guys want to see the whole perimeter of the fence, how it's gonna go? Because it's right here in a drone with a paint, how, or you guys just, as long as it's five feet from-
Well, you're, you're making some improvements. We had asked you to make some changes, and it looks like you are.
Yes.
With 13 and 14, you're even proposing moving this?
Yes. Yeah, yeah, of course.
So it will be a, a better view of the school from standing in the cul-de-sac?
So yes. As you see in number 13, and even number 14, 14 might be a little bit better. There was a first line, which was blue with a stick in a corner. That's where we were supposed to do the fence in the beginning. And then we moved it another three or three and a half feet more towards our property.
Okay, so the, in, in number 14, this tree on the left that is now inside the fence is gonna be outside of the fence by five feet or so?
It's actually gonna be mm-
A little more than five?
About five and a half to six feet.
Okay.
And, and of course, all of that area is gonna be completely repaired. We're gonna use rolled-out sod to create, you know, new grass, and we have certain plants that we want to put on there so it looks really, you know, so it looks, so it looks pretty, you know, so it looks nice to, to the eye. And-
Okay, so, and picture 15, there, okay, so that shows where the fence is gonna cut through where the person is standing?
Yes. So, so the problem is where there's multiple cars dropping off their kids on the cul-de-sac where we live. And that is all, I don't know if it's eagle or not, that's not the point, is there is few people who, who do that, and they wait until their kids get to school, especially in their, if they're younger. And I, and I've done the same thing, so, so I understand. And if you see where the fence ends, I put my, one of my employees here, they're standing in a yellow shirt.
Yes.
That's where the fence would end. If, if that's where the fence ends, and the car stands even not by the bike path, but more to the east side of the bike path, let's say there's a car in front of them, or two cars in front of them. So I calculated, let's say, each car has 20 feet or 25 feet. Then I moved 25 feet and see if they're gonna be still be able to see the entrance of the school, to see their kids walking into the-
Joe had brought that up before about having a better view of the school, of the doorway for the people.
For, we got this site plan at the, towards the end of the day on Friday, so staff did not have a lot of time to review it. There is not a clear dimension on where the fence is going to be from the bike path or that property line. None of the dimensions on here go to, it doesn't clearly say what the setback is that you're doing from the bike path?
From the bike path?
Or from your property line. So you have 11, there's an 11-foot dimension, and then there's a line that says moved eight feet from the property line? I'm assuming the property line's in yellow. I don't really know what's going on.
Okay, if I, if I can come closer, because I'm-
Yes.
I, I can see that.
So this is your property line in yellow?
Yes.
And then? Because this is saying, so your property line's in yellow?
Yes.
And then it says moved eight feet from property line? So this dimension is not eight, that doesn't scale. I can tell you, if that 11-foot is accurate, that's about three feet.
I see what he did. I think he already, this is already the bike path, the line that is, do you see that tree?
Yes.
He put it in the wrong spot. That's actually the tree that is, the, the fence that you see next to the tree in the right, and the rock, you see the rock?
I see the rock.
Yes. So basically, that's gonna be about 13, because in the beginning, it was supposed to be 11 feet.
So how far is it from the bike path? It's 14 feet from the edge of the bike path?
From the edge of the bike path, not from there.
But the, the bike path is partially on their property anyway, right?
Correct. His property line is in the center of the bike path. There was an easement granted, I think in 91.
Okay.
From the bike path, 14 feet.
Okay, which, which is bringing it in considerably more than originally planned.
Correct. Correct. It was originally, it was right up against the bike path, in the location that it is now.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yes.
It's literally a foot away from the bike.
Okay.
And I'm wondering, and we, we can even move it farther out, but then we have a problem with moving the-
The big boulder, right.
Boulder.
Yeah, that would be-
Do a little bit of a dribble, but also-
No, I don't think so either.
And there's also a problem with the solar panels, because the solar panels would be kind of way, 10 feet away from the actual fence. That would make a problem with the solar panels would approach on, basically, the
Can you just go back to the microphone? Sorry. I want to make sure we get everything.
When we talk about unreasonable requests, I think one of those would be, say, move the rock. That obviously weighs a lot and, and would be a not-so-easy task to do.
And, and I believe it's a, it, it, it is one of, it's like a landmark for me, so I, I wouldn't want to remove it, because it's a, it's an unusual, unusual rock, and, and it actually looks really, really, as I, as I say, cool.
So how many feet from the property line along the bike path will the new fence be?
14 feet.
14?
14.
14 from the bike, from the bike-
From the, from the bike path to the fence, 14 feet.
Right.
The tree will be on the side-
The outside.
On the outside of the fence. And-
Originally, it was gonna be inside the fence.
The property line is about five feet into the bike path. So we're using the bike path as the measurement, because that's easier to visualize.
Okay. And then the other part is along the curved part of the property line? How many feet back from the property line will the fence be?
It's all around five-
The curved part?
Five feet. Five feet from the, well, it's a little bit more, more in some spaces, like we, like I said, the, like I said, that there's about six and a half inches for, you know, difference in, in a, in a border line of the property, but we didn't do, use that, use that. We just wanted to show you that there, that, that there is a mistake, but we still used the sidewalk as a, as a-
As a guide.
As a guide.
Five feet back from the sidewalk?
Yes, it's five feet from the sidewalk. Yes, ma'am.
At one point, when the sidewalk was replaced, they didn't use the exact footprint.
So some places, it's like six feet from the property line, but-
Right, but you just use the sidewalk as the visual.
Exactly.
So, so it's even. And, 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 and we're trying to, what I brought over here is basically to show what, what we're gonna use as a, as a fence. It's not gonna be a regular, you know, white or, you know, cider fence, it's a-
I mean, we, you can see what happens to wood fences, like what you have, they deteriorate over a period of years.
Yeah.
Okay, so you brought, go ahead and pass that around, so that-
It's a composite, composite.
So that doesn't deteriorate?
Or decking, or fencing.
From a distance, that's gonna look like real wood.
So the, the nicer side that looks like wood grain is required to face out?
Right.
Side that has like the stripe look will be facing inside?
And that is, that has a warranty- And that is, that has a warranty, fifty years of no degradation and no mold, no insect, no insect penetration and all other things. I have, actually, I could have brought the paperwork, the tests that were done on this, because I asked the company to send me. I'm getting that from Europe specifically for that reason. And we're also gonna add, as you see over there, bushes along the fence on the cul-de-sac.
That'll kinda break up the wall effect.
So it looks, you know, uniform and it has a nice, you know, touch to it. And in between, maybe the bushes, we're thinking maybe like a straw grass that, you know, that will, that will make it look, my wife is a really good designer when it comes to things, designing things.
Yes.
I'm sure she's gonna make it look beautiful. And we're designing the whole house, so this is only the beginning and...
So you had mentioned the people across the street in the cul-de-sac were supportive of the idea.
Sir, we have received, we went around and received all the letters from, actually, only Christie had, I have all the letters from around.
Has those around? Those will be another bunch of exhibits.
So this would be the three houses across the street in the cul-de-sac they would be looking at?
Oh, okay.
So all the neighbors, those neighbors that you recommended, plus all the other ones around me.
Wow.
We went to all of them. And they all agreed to write something, except one that we didn't, we told them too late and he wasn't there. We couldn't get him until last night and he had to go to work. And he's like, if I have time, I live in a bag of bags, but I just...
People are usually more prone to come out on a negative thing than on a positive note. I mean, if they had problems with it, they would be here to testify against you. So that's very impressive. I just, I wanna comment because I had publicly expressed my disappointment in you last month because you were only going a foot and you hadn't really changed it. I'm very impressed with what you've done. I'm impressed with these pictures because it gives a better visualization. And I'm glad that you got the letters of the people that would have to look at it, that they don't have a problem with it, that you need to be commended for that.
Thank you, sir.
I have to ask a question about the actual makeup of that product. Is that the actual product that you're going to use for the fence boards?
We could. We have the options of, I mean, this is the actual product that it's made out of. We can have design of whatever we want.
Part of that was for a deck, right?
So your boards could be solid boards and thinner, but they will be of that composition?
Yes, yes. We can have thinner, we can have solid with no, what it means that there's no holes inside. I'm sorry, did you wanna add anything, Maggie? Okay. So yeah, we have multiple design options, colors. This is just an example that we have that they sent us because we were also gonna do a deck, an extended deck, after we do the fence and the solar and the backup. But that's another permit and another set of things that we...
So the deck and the fence are gonna basically look the same from a distance because it's gonna have that wood ingrained?
Yes, yes, in a way, yes. Well, we're gonna try to make it, the fence, a little bit more of a, different than the deck. So it has a little bit of more of a, I'm looking for a word, what is it called?
Design style?
Yeah, yeah. So it's not, so it doesn't blend.
Right. Just a little contrast.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And to tell you the truth, I'm not gonna be the one doing the design. I have my own designer who's gonna be doing it. And she's gonna be designing the whole space around the fence, basically, after we put the solar and the fence, because that's gonna be up to her. And she's gonna be the one responsible for, with my wife, of course, working together.
Do you have any idea of what color you wanna use for the fence?
Maggie, would you be so kind and...
Hi, my name's Maggie. Ten Seventy Dartmouth Drive. First of all, thank you so much for coming to the site and seeing and hearing us, seeing from what we see and what people see passing by. Like, my husband said, this is very high traffic area. There's a lot of people, a lot of kids, kids going. Basically, the space by the rock is filled with bottles, anything and everything.
I have a question, please.
Oh.
What the color is?
So as far as the colors, we're looking for something lighter. It's not gonna be white. We wanna...
You wanna show them something?
No, because it's not really here yet. We've seen it in the picture. It's gonna look very...
Cherry?
No. It's gonna look very natural. It's not gonna be too dark, it's not gonna be too light. But it's gonna make sure it's gonna match with the house and the neighborhood and the greenery that we're gonna plant alongside the fence.
Do you, can you give us at least a color, what kind of...
So the color is gonna be going towards beige, light beige.
We can make it wood?
Yes.
And if I can add to the fact of the fence that we have right now, we have a small little dog and kids are picking up the dog coming out of school. And every once in a while, it's gone. And then someone, you know, after, you know, an hour or two, you know, and we're looking, someone's bringing, you know, someone brings it and, oh, my son brought it home and...
I know it's your dog, by the way. Oh my gosh, thank you.
So that's not, so that's one more.
So what I can say from my perspective, I always looking for aesthetics, and that's very important to me. Right now, I don't even look at my yard because it looks horrible because of the fact that we can't create anything over there because every single time people passing by, they're just looking, staring at us directly. So there is no privacy whatsoever. Once it's all put up, the fence, the greenery, it's gonna look perfect. It's gonna be only the improvement for the neighborhood, for the neighbors. And if I can add that, I don't even know these people that I've talked to and I got the letters from. It's not like we are friends, like we hang out. And for them, not even having any objections, not being here and write the, take the time and write the letters, it testifies to, it really, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna bother people, the neighbors, the someone who has to face the fence every day.
Right.
I was glad to hear, see that you did go out to the neighbors and speak to them. I like it when I hear that one neighbor can go and talk to another. It's not that you have to be the best of friends, but you are neighbors and you have to share the space of the neighborhood. Good move on that part. I appreciate the work there.
Thank you.
And in the new plan, I'm happy to see that some bushes, some greenery is gonna be planted on the outside of the fence.
Yes.
That's gonna soften the view of that fence to the people on the, across the cul-de-sac. So again, you're getting a plus there on that, in my opinion.
I may add one more thing. The tree that is on the corner, Southern Court, yeah, this, exactly. That tree is, if you look at the pictures over there, it's actually the border, where the fence would be, would basically be almost on a tree. So we're gonna make it basically like it is over there. We're gonna either make a circle or a diagonal.
Preserve the tree.
Preserve the tree and make it, yeah. And that tree would also be on the outside of the, of our, of the...
It would be arced kind of around...
Yes, 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 yes.
Around where the tree is from the inside.
Yeah, yeah.
So the fence will curve and then the tree will kind of hug the tree.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Now our fence is just, you know, falling apart.
And I think the greenery is gonna look beautiful against the new fence. It's...
Well, I'm with that composite material. The fence is always going to look new. It's not going to change to a deteriorated look.
Yeah.
Right.
Seen many fences, the wood fences, that throughout the years, either they are painted or stained, they never look the same. And the effect is different. With this material and testing and everything else and the looks, it's very high...
High quality. We actually went, I specifically went to Europe to see a product that was put on fifteen or sixteen years ago. And I wanted to see how it looks. And it was still color-wise and...
Sure.
Almost the same.
The ground is material, old rock?
No, no, no. This is actually, you can actually use it as a, you can use it as a...
Swimming pool. Around the swimming pool.
As a decking. This is composite decking. Yes. No nails used for that, clips. You use hangers and you basically...
They're asking for that people for borrowing your dog.
Yes.
Yeah, exactly.
She's so proud of us.
Well, it's very impressive because we don't, you know, we were very much opposed to it before. And I think by going out there, it's the difference between a meeting and a virtual meeting of actually seeing things. You're dealing with something unusual with the property line variation problem with the sidewalk beyond your control. So I think you're doing as best as you could because it's an unusual configuration on the lot anyway. And since you didn't get cooperation with the homeowners association, and you could see from the last hearing that people, they had a pretty good mix of people that testified, but, you know, unless you get people to come and testify for you or write the letters, that you're more apt to have people opposed to something. And I'm just impressed that people are not opposed to something that large. But then you have an unusual lot shape. And I'm impressed with what you've done and brought these things before us so that we have better ammunition to base our decisions on.
I think the new plan's a nice compromise between keeping some, you know, the concerns of the parents who are going to the school, you know, and giving the opening, and yet still getting the privacy. And I drove by for the third time today. And you're right. I mean, your yard, actually, I think it looks bigger in these pictures. And when you drive by and you look at the actual available space to use, and it's not that much.
Not that much.
And I think this is nice that it comes in and gives you the privacy. You know, there's probably not, there is no privacy there, not with the school and the children and everything. And kids will be kids, so...
I'm talking about the, like, the weekend.
Nice compromise.
Yes. And Joe had a valid point when he was talking about moving that fence back for the view. And I think it's good for you not to have the rock on the outside because the kids are liable to climb up on the rock to try to get over to the fence to look over, you know?
Yeah, we're gonna be about two feet away from the rock with the fence.
Yeah.
Or maybe, yeah, about two feet.
Any other comments?
Question for staff, just so that I'm totally understanding why, why can't solar panels be put on the roof?
It is, their homeowners association was the ones that told them they could not. The village does not have a problem with them putting roof-mounted solar panels. It meets our building code. Their homeowners association denied their request. The village doesn't enforce that. If they came in for a building permit, we would still issue a building permit because it meets our code. They're trying to cooperate with their homeowners association.
Boy, that's a strong commitment.
They could have just said, we get the village permit and we're good to go. They're willing to work with their neighbors, in effect, again, to be a good citizen.
That says if they, if the homeowners association comes after them, they're doing so at their own risk. But...
Okay.
Well, what they said is that they don't have any rules for solar because the laws were written in nineteen ninety-three, I believe, when the HOA was made. And they didn't have any rules regarding the solar. So what they did, what they told us is to basically use satellite dish as an example, as, to use those rules for the solar. So when we look at the rules for the satellite dish, we basically can put panels anywhere, almost anywhere except where the cul-de-sac is, a few panels, because you can, you can, panels cannot face any street, cannot be visible from any street. So, and we are...
And not to even mention, the lady didn't even wanna speak to us after she found out what we are trying to accomplish. So I guess that was...
That's a, that's a, that's a, yeah. And then I called her a few more times and she, after that, yeah.
Any further discussions or motions from the board?
My only comment is, my concern initially was the fence being at the sidewalk. I saw it as a safety issue. I understand why you can't go back ten feet. When I was out initially before the very first meeting, as Mike said, it's a very unique situation. By moving the fence back the way you have it now, alleviates any safety concerns, I believe, and is a nice compromise, helping to meet the ordinance as best you can.
And that's key, as best you can. You're somewhat limited. But I think I'm impressed with how much you've striven to work with us and to do a compromise. Anyone else? Any motions?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion on the board, on the floor to approve. At this point, we shall close the public hearing portion. Any discussions? I mean, any seconds?
Seconds.
Second by Michelle. Moved by Charlie, second by Michelle. Further discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Bob Picaro?
Yes.
Guy Papa?
Yes.
Michelle Suarez?
Yes.
Charlie DeVoe?
Yes.
George Cozio?
Yes.
Joe Bano?
Yes.
Mike Wearden?
Yes. Okay, you got a unanimous, positive decision.
Thank you very much. You're really...
I think it would have gone the other way last month. So thank you for your work.
I have to extend a compliment to the homeowners that you really, you went above and beyond. You tried to work with the village, to the village's best interest and your best interest. It's nice to see that this worked out.
Yes, it is.
We're glad, we're glad we could do that.
I hope it works out well and I'm anxious to see it.
I was just gonna say, I'm anxious to drive by and see the finished product.
It's gonna be, yeah. Well, we're gonna have more permits.
Maybe barbecue for everyone.
Maybe more, we're gonna have plenty more permits coming in soon. So just to start the process.
You'll see us again.
I've never seen this before in forty years where we had to go three meetings to get it and how you basically changed us from being very strong against it to being supportive. So thank you.
It might, well, it's probably my fault due to the fact that I was absent on the first meeting and there was some... um, absent on the first meeting. And, um, there was someone for me, one of my associates, who wasn't really, um, knowledgeable about the situation exactly. I explained him, I was out of, out of state, so I couldn't make it. And, um, in the end, uh, uh, yeah, so.
It was all good, so.
Now, I was there on the second one and I heard something else from him and her and, and I had no idea what was really going on. And when I came here for the second one, I realized that, no, no, we gotta, we gotta, we gotta compromise more than then both.
Gotta do something, right? Sure.
Well, thank you very much for, for your time and, uh-
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Good luck. Stay in touch with Christie to find out when it appears on the village board agenda. I'm sure soon, right?
Um, we're looking at village board committee on October twentieth.
Okay.
So, Kim has a lot of minutes to write.
Yes.
My question, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Ask a question?
Yes.
Um, so, from now on, I understand, uh, the positive, um, feedback from the board members is a good thing. Now it goes to a zoning.
You'll go to village board committee October twentieth and then you'll go to the first meeting in November. I wanna say it's November sixth. It's the first Tuesday of the month for village board for a final vote. Call me tomorrow or email me tomorrow. I'll give you all the details on that.
And, and that, in November sixth voting, is, is it public voting or is it, is it recorded or is it, is it, is it private?
Oh, no, it's a public meeting like this. I think they're still doing Zoom. So if you want, I recommend you come to village board committee. There's usually not as much discussion for a variation. So I recommend you come to committee. Village board, it's not necessary that you come. That, you could probably just attend via Zoom. But I would definitely recommend you come to village board committee on the twentieth.
Of, of October, you mean?
Of October, yes.
If you didn't have opposition here, which you didn't, nobody in the public spoke against you, you're not gonna have it at the board meeting.
First Tuesday of November election, maybe third. Ooh, I don't know what they're doing with that.
Oh.
I don't know if that's, I don't know what we're doing.
Yeah, they're, I'm sure they're not-
Don't hold me to that village board date.
Yeah, so you know what? I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm not gonna go by those dates yet. I'm gonna, uh-
Give me a call tomorrow and I'll know. I know you're definitely on October twentieth. I don't know what the November date will be.
Ah, so October twenty, it is?
Sure.
For sure. Just the November sixth, I'm not sure.
November sixth.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Do you?
Yes.
We could, we, do you mind if I keep yours? Do, are they gonna be passing these out to board members?
They'll, they will be included in their packet.
Okay.
Board's getting a big packet next month.
Okay.
Do you have your originals? Cause you took, I got the letters back. Did you get the packet of the pictures?
Oh.
I did get around to-
Did the pa, can I get a packet?
Letters?
Letters, yes.
I have the letters.
Oh, the letters.
Do you have the pa, a packet of the pictures? I gave you all my stuff.
Here's mine.
Can I take, yeah, mine?
We wanna give these back to them.
Okay.
This is expensive.
Yeah, can I get one of those?
I don't keep them.
I just need one. I just need one.
Indeed, these are expensive, what you did.
Okay. We'll, we'll look through them then before they leave. It has all the writing on it? Oh, they didn't all have the writing? Okay. Is one that had a-
Oh, this one.
This one.
This one, this is, this is.
That's the one.
Okay.
Because these are expensive. We know we don't need them.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sir?
So you're saying the twentieth, right?
The twentieth.
One more here. You don't need it. It doesn't matter. I'm just, expensive to remain.
You could use it at the village meeting.
Get them again.
You could take it to the village meeting or show it to the, take it to the village meeting. That stuff is expensive.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. Okay, old business, new business. Anything else happening?
Um, you will have at least three cases next month.
Three?
Commercial, commercial, industrial, two, two businesses out in Brewster Creek and a gas station, um, so far, and possibly an apartment building, which may be in the downtown.
Oh.
I'm probably gonna have this next month. I think it lies at ECC that July, this last month.
Okay.
Thursday, that it's not in for December.
Okay. You're missing a good one.
Well, I'm glad that you were here for this one because-
Um, we just got submitted a building that is four hundred and thirty-six thousand square feet that'll be in Cook County. Um, it's going across from the building that's being built out there for McKesson. So it's big. They're asking for a variation to do loading docks in the corner side yard and not having to recess it or have them fully enclosed. Um, and then there's another one with Rana Pasta has expanded to do frozen foods. And they went into the old Dania building and now they wanna add loading docks along Brewster Creek Boulevard and add another curb cut in there so that the trucks can load directly into the frozen, the freezer section.
Oh.
So, um, move that. And then the gas station, uh, Buc-E's. Do you remember Buc-E's? It was a, looking at a cross.
Buc-E's is back?
They ended up withdrawing. So they are looking at going at the southwest, yes, southwest corner of fifty-nine and Sterns.
Really?
The old mobile station will be torn down and they're going to be doing, um, a complete overhaul.
Wow.
Just north of like where the Starbucks, the new Starbucks outlaw. So a complete tear down and a rebuild.
So Mobile is leaving?
What?
So Mobile is leaving?
I think Buc-E's is Mobile.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, right.
That, that seems to be a smaller lot than what they were looking at though, isn't it?
Um, it's also going to be the lot to the west of it.
So Sonic is gonna go?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'm sure the pandemic has hurt them.
So.
Mr. Milkshake.
Okay. Anything else? Well, thank you, board members, for everything. This was a very unusual case. And, uh, I'm glad that everybody put forth an extra effort to try to look into it a little more because we were definitely opposed to it. Um, it did not have, and, and I didn't, I didn't like it last month. Well, it, well, he explained he was unaware of what was happening. So I kind of read him the riot act at the meeting. So we, I think he did a good turnaround. And I'm glad that people went out to see it. So thank you, everybody, for all the extra effort. Any motions to adjourn?
One last comment first. Staff definitely deserves a thank you for all of the work on this one.
Yes.
I did my homework for this one.
This was probably the most unique thing I've seen in my whole time.
Yes.
On the ZBA.
Yeah, me too.
The last two meetings, three meetings.
I would call them every few days. Did you hear anything yet? Did they submit anything? No, no.
On other news related to that, we are hiring an assistant planner. Hopefully we'll have somebody new. We did interviews last week, hoping to have a new hire by the end of the month.
Oh, good.
So.
Okay.
Cause we're busier than we've been in probably twelve years. So.
Okay. Any motions to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by George?
Second.
Seconded by Charlie DeVoe?
Everybody.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's do it.